Okay, it is 6:30 and this is time to call the 14th fourth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and our Constitution.
Alright, item three, change your additions to the agenda. Uh, we have none. So, I would like to change the motion to approve the consent of agenda at present.
No, or, or through the consent of agenda at present. Second.
The move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alright, item on five, personnel, item on six, community input, unofficial data, seven, nothing, eight, new visitors. Brand expenditures. New purchase of 25 Apple laptops for K-12 schools through the oral education grant, amount, uh, not to exceed $33,000.
I move forward to approve the purchase of 25 Apple laptops for K-12 schools through the oral education grant, not to exceed $33,000. Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item B, new purchase of 12 desktop computers for NYC, we title one grant amount, not to exceed $16,200.
I move forward to purchase of 12 desktop computers, please sell VPN, title one grant, not to exceed $16,200. Second.
Been moved in second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Principal staff report.
Okay, um, I've placed some test results in front of you, if you can just turn those over. The first page shows the IT test, I would test the basic skill, which we administer as a district to first and second grade. We don't, um, test utilizing a state level assessment because they're not required. But just for the purposes of our own, um, data, so that we can provide supplemental services to students indeed, we have to have some sort of assessment. So this is what we administer. And because we only administer at first and second, we have data for this year's third graders, we took the first and second grade, and then for this year's second graders. So if we're tracking kids, that's the data I have. So if I could direct you to, um, the page here, it says elementary, no, I, yes, I'm sorry, just keep looking at that. The first grade back in 2013, they had, uh, if you look at the national percentile, that represents the percentage of students that we have achieving. And so if you look at a bell curve, so on the scale up here, if you look at this, and then you put it on a bell curve, those in the middle, that's where you find the larger population, and of course, fewer here, fewer here. The national standard is, um, considers 25 to 75, being the middle, the average. And if you look at our first graders back in 2013, this would be this year's third graders. In the area of reading, they had a 51 percentile, ranked with students in grade one all across the country. And then if you go to 2014, so that was this past spring, that same group had a 68 percentile. So they made a gain of 17 percent in the area of reading. You go to language, um, in first grade, they had a 74 percentile. You go to second grade, they had a 71, so they had a loss of 3 percent. You go to vocabulary, in first grade, they had a 48 percentile. You go to second grade, they had a 68 percentile, so a gain of 20 percent. So the total English language parts, that's ELA total, for this group of kids who were now in the third grade, between first and second grade, they had a gain of 7 percent. Any questions about that? Okay, then you go down to word analysis, that same group of kids had a 57 percent in first grade, 64 in second grade, so a gain of 7 percent. Their listening skills went from 67 percent to 78 percent, or they have 11. So their extended ELA total, the ELA was 60 percent in first grade, and up 10 percent by the time they went to second grade, the end of second grade. Their mathematics, they were at an 80 percent first grade, 74 in second grade, so they lost about 6 percent. You go to computation, however, they had an 85 percent in first grade, and up to a 96 percent in second grade, so they had a gain of 11 percent. For their math total overall, from first to second grade, was 83 percentile to an 84, which is plus 0.1. Or, excuse me, that should have been plus 1, from first grade to second grade. But their core composite, you'll see that they went from 69 to 76 percent. So that's a 7 percent, you have to, um, end of first grade and second grade. End of second grade. Any questions about that? Okay, so if we look down at this past year's first graders who are now in second grade, they had a reading score of 57 in the national percentile, language was 75. And if you, how do you compare with the group above them? It's, it's pretty consistent. Um, vocabulary was 69 percentile, that is interesting, because they were substantially higher than, than the vocabulary of the, this class before them. And the ELA total, the 71, where it asked the group before them, it was now the third grade was 73. You look at word analysis, again, they exceeded what, um, the previous class had, 57 percent, they had a 69. And their listening skills went from, well, 67 for that first group in second grade, 74 percent. Or they, and the extended ELA total of 68 percent. And now, that, the first part, and if the mathematics, if you can problem solving, so the story problems. This group here, the current second grade group, had a 75 percentile, but their computation was 85, and their math total was 80 percent. And they were 3 percent lower than the, the current third graders. But if you look at, um, this group, that also dictates, because cohorts are different. You have some classes with more special needs, you have some students who, you know, academics and struggle more, so you can't really, it's apples and oranges from one group to the next, when we give the same information and differentiate instruction and saying that some kids get it, some don't, and so, and that's pretty close. So our kids overall, in first and second grade, they're doing really well, to be that high, because they're actually on the higher end of the bell curve. That would have been a problem. That's pretty detrimental, I think our teachers are doing a great job. And even now, looking up their, going to the news, looking toward the home court, uh, they're lining the report cards that way, uh, they're attending workshops. Kendall Ford is during his boot camp, that I think you're gonna come see that. It's just amazing what, um, they're doing to inspire and fix and learn and solve, they're all doing a great job. Okay, so if you move on to the, the grade to the next, the MSP.
Time out.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, question.
Okay.
Okay, you've got the test, identifying particular aspects of what you're being tested for. And then the very next column is an N, like a pound sign or something? Is that the number of students, or what is that?
Can it see?
Right here.
Um, yes, there are 28 kids in the class.
Okay, so, um, why is there 28? Uh, it actually has 27 and a couple, so I can see where maybe a child wasn't involved in maybe some of those tests. But, uh, the, the next grade, let me go, there's 20, and the next grade, let me go, there's 18. So what, what is that, what is, what do you tell us, Steve?
Yeah, it's the, the number of, so some of them, this is the second grade. This is the second grade, grade two. They're all 18, right?
For, for the second grade, but if you go back.
To the first grade?
If you look at the, uh, first grade 2014.
Right.
First grade 2013, there's, you know.
There's 20 kids.
20 versus 28.
Well, right, but this is two different, okay, this first grade here that was tested in 2014 is not, okay. This is this class, 2013, 2014, one year they had 18, the next year they had 20. This class only tested one year in first grade. That's this year's second graders, this, this group.
Don't we have like 30 some kids in our second grade class?
We have 30 now, but there were only 28 who tested.
In your last grade.
Last grade.
Okay, so where did we get the 18 kids from?
That was from the previous class, the second grade.
It's the data.
See, they, I highlighted.
I, I, I guess, so you understand my question? That's my understanding, our K first and second grades are 30-plus kids. So I'm trying to figure out, how, how is that equating, you know, where's the rest of the kids?
Those kids haven't tested yet. These are last grade kids.
The big second grade, the big is right now. And the big first grade is right now, and the big kindergarten is right now. So first grade, this group, they tested here, the kids are in third grade right now. So those are the results for 2013 and 14. This class is right now in third grade. There aren't that many kids in that class. There are only 18 in that class from presently at present.
Okay, then that's the big one that's in grade two.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then this group is highlighted in the yellow.
Right.
That's the big second grade class right now, that was in first grade last year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay, now, okay, so go to the middle thing, is it grade one, or 2013, which class is that?
That is the class that is in third grade right now.
Page two and page three are the same class, right?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the year he wore.
See what I'm saying, it's, so I was trying to show you the gains between, between the first.
My bad, I just tried to, tried to.
So that's why I highlighted Steve.
The numbers just weren't driving.
Sorry about that. No, wait, 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 here, okay, so this is, the yellow is for one group, and the pink is for the separate, the number class. Their first grade and second grade, does that make sense?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Ready? Sorry if I confused you. Okay, so if you move on to the elementary MSP scores, uh, we can look at them now. What's happening, we go at, well, this is over now, we're doing the SBA, the smarter balance, okay? And it doesn't matter, what we're trying to decide right now is if we're going to go paper, pencil, or if we're going to go with online. Our concerns with the online, um, are that the students may not have the technological skills needed to be successful, because it, it's a matter of pulling up different windows, utilizing different tools. And I feel like, um, a few years ago, when we did the online MSP, our scores really tamped. And I can't help but think it had to do with the technology. So we do have the option of online testing or paper, pencil testing right now. And until I think our kids who feel like they have the, the technological skills to be successful, we'd rather utilize the paper and pencil, at least through elementary and possibly through middle school. Because even the teachers are very concerned right now, saying, okay, am I supposed to teach them the skills? Or am I supposed to be teaching them computer, computer skills? And it's kind of hard to do all of it, you know, they require you to do the math, the, the language parts, do the science, and then social studies, and then want to throw in the technology piece. Which they are referring to technology, don't get me wrong, they're using iPads, they're using computers, but as far as computer literacy and taking an assessment, totally different. And so, if you look at the elementary MSP scores, um, they did a lot of assessing with, um, what's called cohort data. And cohorts are the students that are in the, the same groups of students. So if you look at the third grade, I can only look at this year, because they only took the test one time, that was this past spring. So 15 out of 18 third graders passed the reading assessment, for 83.3 percentile. The state average was 72, so we were above that.
So is the 83.3 including the three that did not pass it?
Uh, yes, it does, that, because that was 100 percent. Right, well.
And that's, that's a test score, or that's a number of kids?
That's a number of the percentage of students in the class who passed the test, okay? So go over the math, and 15 out of 18 passed the, um, the math test. So again, um, the same, and I would say that it was the same kids, the same three kids did not pass the reading, that did not pass the math. And the state average was 62 percent, so we were above that again. Okay, take a look at grade fours. What I did is I gave, gave you our scores, first of all, from a whole group, handed it to each group. So 15 out of 20 kids passed the reading assessment, for 75 percent. Okay, 75 percent of the class passed the MSP in reading in fourth grade. 70 percent of the state fourth graders passed that same test. If you look at writing, 16 out of 20 of our fourth graders passed the writing, for, um, 80 percent. The state average was 62.1.
Were you seeing the state average?
Um, actually, like, what I did is I couldn't, you know, if they were on the SBA website, I could just pull them off there. So I thought, you know what? I, well, I think, you know, I always think we can do better, because we're not 100 percent. So, no, no, I didn't need to pull that specific state in, so that's what I did, that's what I did. And I can sort of like send you through the, 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 and I got the website.
Wasn't reading on here.
No, I, I just, you know, went up here. Okay, so, we have math, 16 out of 20 of our, um, fourth graders passed the math. Again, we're 80 percent, and 60.8 of the state's fourth graders passed that assessment, or that's the average rather. Now, if you look below that, what I like to do is look at the cohort, and I stay within two years. And the reason for that is, we have transition, I mean, we have kids coming and going, coming and going. So I try to stay within two years, because outside of two years, you don't have as many of those cohorts, although I think we do have more of it in the ninth grade, we should see later. Um, so looking at that, 19 students were in third grade that went to fourth grade to take this test, okay? Out, um, out of those 19, 14 of them passed the reading, only one of them did not. And then in the math, 15 out of 19. So they were a little bit lower in both areas, that is the cohort. So there were new students in there that also added to the success. But if you look down at third grade, okay, the 19, uh, the 19 cohort again, what you will see every year is third grade, and so the question would be, is it the assessment, is it, well, what's going on? Or is it really the instruction? 16 to 19, out of 19, passed the reading in, in third grade, for 84.2 percentile. And then 15 out of 19 passed the math. But one thing to note is that, when I, I say, oh, is it the instruction, what's going on? I think our fourth grade teacher, you know, all our teachers do a great job of adjusting, working at data. Last year, Ms. Nisbet's, um, fourth graders received an 80 percent in writing, while the state average is 62.1. The previous year, and I realize it's a different cohort, so we're not looking at cohorts now, um, 11 out of 21 passed, going with 52 percent. This is the highest reading score we've had for a long, long time, probably 11 to 12 over two years. So she did outstanding job. So we might compromise a little bit, um, somehow, but also, again, you have to look at the different classes, and, you know, some have special needs. And I've talked to special services, because a couple of years ago, the, um, I talked to the ESD, to, you know, their teachers who serve our students. And I did say to them that you need to do something to help our kids to get over the bar, because if you look, that is one of the areas that our kids don't need AYP, and that is special needs students. And so we need to do a better job. I think our teachers will implement you and do everything they can, that the ESD also provides those services. So working together, we need to help them, those kids over the bar, because it doesn't matter who you are, we need to be able to pass that, um, state level assessment.
So what kind of a score do they have to get to pass that test?
You have to have 400.
400, and what is possible?
It just depends, I mean, okay, writing's not 400, writing.
Oh, I see, so that varies from subject to subject.
Change it every year, and the test is changed every year, so it's not anything, it's not the same test every year, you know it's a deep, like, secret. And I'll talk to about the SBA, you know, the smarter balance, because that's coming at us, and that's even a bigger secret than anything. And at least we have these items, and so while we can't, um, we don't know what's on the test, you know there's going to be inherent, um, you know, there's going to be an expository that they're going to have to do for the vital component. You do know that there's going to be comprehension, you do know that you have to provide details and outline and, um, highlight and write those down. So we have strategies in place that help our kids to succeed, but it's all changing. And even today, this morning, I was talking to a couple of teachers, and they're very, very concerned, um, because they said, we don't know what to do. And it's, you know what, they're doing the right thing, you are, they're going to the trainings, they're looking at all the information they possibly can, they're watching webinars. They're working hard, but the concern is, because they don't know what it looks like. But they're not the only ones, you know, like, in this country, who knows what that test is like. So we're down to fifth grade, and we see the 12 out of 18 passed the reading. Um, it was a 66.6 percent, and the state was 72.4. The math, 12 out of 18, and then 66.6, and the state was 63.5. And then 15 out of 18 passed science, so the 83.3 percent, the state was 66.8. Now look at the cohort, so there are 15 students who were in the fourth grade, who are also in the fifth grade. And 10 out of those 15 students passed, for 66.6 percent in reading. And then 11 out of 15, for 73.3 percent in math. And then if you look down below at the fourth grade, when those same kids were in fourth grade, if you look at those scores, then they're identical. So what that says, out of the, of the students, is the cohort remains the same, that we take on new students, and typically, that leads to lower scores. Not always, but we are getting an ever challenging population of students in, and so we just need to work harder at that point, with new students. Those are elementary scores, any questions about those?
Why do you think they did so much better in math? I mean, why?
In math, where did it go, is that?
Uh, in science.
In science?
As opposed to math and, uh, free.
Do you know, that's, it's interesting, um, that we had Dan Turner here, who, the, the previous time, I mean, he was here, then gone, and then here again, and those kids scored really well in science. He has a tremendous amount of passion for science. Not saying that he let them rest it ago, but he really had a way of, um, engaging kids in that science. And so that, that gives a lot of hands-on, and so I think as the kids were, you know, with the hands-on and the learning taking place, I think they, uh, they were just more interested, I could say, just even observing and going in and watching them, you know, putting sand in with the liquids and checking them around, and then they had to, you know, write their little hypothesis, and, and do what, whether that thing is going to happen, and then running with their conclusions, and working with the group, and so it's all that hands-on engagement. And so I almost wonder if that was part of it too, because the reading, um, you can see, it's, like I said, it's consistent. It's not like, um, it's way high and then way low, not with this group of kids. Anyways, but the science, I can say, um, we had the same, pretty consistent science scores if you look down. This is the first year to test science for these kids. The previous year, those liquidators had a 4.1 percent. So I think a lot of it just has to do with, and it could be group too. Um, this fifth grade group is now the sixth grade group, and they're very, very high achieving with the kids. But what I also know is that there are, um, significant higher population special needs kids in there than, well, not the under process. And so they may have, um, helped here, and I know of a lot of those, or several of those same special needs kids, passed in science. They did really, really well there. So I think it might have been the engagement level, and, um, just being able to explain themselves in little boxes. There's not a lot of reading necessarily to go with that, whereas reading is reading, there's comprehension, there's, um, literal analysis, inferential analysis. So there's all of that, which is a little bit more complex. Is that okay?
Yes.
Steve?
Do I have to have a question?
Oh, no, no, okay, just checking, no one, no one, no, okay. Okay, um, spring MSP, let's look at the middle school, that is, uh, step in, I guess, 75, which says MSP, spring 2014, MSP, grade six. Okay, so they had 12 out of 24, um, only 50 percent of that class, um, passed reading. Um, 72.7 for the state, and then if you look at the math, 12 out of 24, and then that was only 50 percent. Um, the state was 63.6 percent. And then when I looked at the cohort, 12 out of 22 passed, so it went up a little bit in both reading and math. But we also had one refusal, which counted against us. And then we had portfolio also in both reading and math, and that doesn't count at all. So when people refuse to take the test, or refuse to have their children take the test, it really does hurt us.
What's portfolio?
Portfolio is for the special needs kids who are not able to take the regular assessment, and so they provide other services, other. And if you look back to 2013, when they went to fifth grade, we had the same percentage, it's 12 out of 22 of that cohort passed the assessment. And the same thing in math, 12 out of 22 passed that assessment. So the same groups of kids didn't, didn't make any gains, it doesn't appear. And what I can tell you is, this is the group that, um, all our middle school teachers are really focusing on. There seem to be a substantial, um, amount of challenges with this particular group, and it's this year's second grade. So these are their test scores right here, the 50 percent, a lot of high needs kids. Not just high needs academically, but high needs emotionally, high needs, there's a lot there. There's more than just your academic needs. Okay, if you go down to the seventh grade, 16 out of 22 passed the math, or excuse me, reading, for 72.7 percent. When the state average was 67.7. 19 out of 22 passed the writing, um, which is 86.3, and 71.1 state average. 13 out of 22 passed the math, and the state average on that one was 57.8 percent. Okay, now I took the 17 students who have been together, and actually tracked them back to fourth grade because of writing, because they were only assessed in four, seven, and 10 for writing. So I went back and got their score in writing, back in, um, 2011. But back in sixth grade, um, 12 out of 17 passed the reading for a 70.5 percentile. And 14 out of 17 passed the math for 82.3. Now, the explanation, I can tell you what happened with the math, is that when you, I talked about the lack of, and it's a living systems program. It's money given to us by the state. It's money given to us by the state, and we have to identify students who have not passed the state level assessment in order to give supplemental support. Well, we had four kids who passed the state level assessment in sixth grade. So they didn't have to have that support in the seventh grade. And as a matter of fact, middle school kids, it gets to the point where they, well, they'd rather take their elective, they don't really want that supplemental support. Please, please, I passed the M S P, so if I have to get that support. And the parents, of course, support that, and so we went ahead and let them out. While those same kids are the kids who did not meet the standard. Even though they met in sixth grade, they did not meet in seventh grade. So that supplemental support is absolutely essential when they're on the top. You know, four oh seven, fourth hand, those students who did pass back in sixth grade now were discontinued out of the LAB program. And then there are the ones that do not pass this past spring. And the same thing actually happened with the eighth grade, because there were eleven at fourteen, passed reading. The seventy-eight point five percent, and the state was seventy-one point six. And then five at fourteen passed the math, got a five point seven, and then the state was fifty-five point nine. And then eleven out of fourteen passed science, and seventy-eight point five, where the state was sixty-seven point two. If you look at the math, if you look at the cohort, we had five out of twelve passed for forty-one point six six. So those kids that have gone to school together now since fourth grade. There were fourteen of them in the math, and twelve, or and I can actually take those two or I don't remember where they were. And so the kids actually went, those kids, if you just take the cohort group, they're higher in reading because they went eighty-three point three, but they went down to math. Now, the interesting thing to note is if you go down below, where it says two by two algebra E O C. One of the students who did not pass the M S P passed the algebra E O C. And then another student who passed M S P also passed E O C. So the end of course assessment, which is a high school level assessment, so you have to pass one of the algebra, and at the end of geometry, you have to pass at least two of those. Well, interestingly, I have the kids who did not pass the test, and they would, five kids last year didn't qualify for the LAB program, okay? And they kept saying, "We want a study hall, we want a study hall." Well, you did really well on the M S P, so we should, you know, this is an opportunity. You don't need to be in there, you had four seventeen, whatever. And they insisted they have this study hall. We don't have study halls for kids because they, you know, over time, they haven't been utilizing that degree. So we have learning assistance programs for supplemental support, but not study hall. Well, if you notice the kids, again, that do pass, the kids that do not pass are those kids who had passed reading this year, but didn't get to study hall. Now they can pass the test. So what we discussed is one of the remedies for this is second semester this year, we are going to go ahead and pull the electives and get those kids a study hall. If that's what they want, then that's what we'll do and see if that makes a difference. If that's what they're saying that they want, and they'll utilize it, and obviously they'll put staff in, they'll be providing that, and we'll watch that. But they talked to Justin about this, they talked to the teachers about this, they were all in shock going, "How could this be? Those kids did well last year," but there was just this attitude almost. And so we said, "Okay, we'll give them a study hall." We're pulling that second semester, we're trying to pull some of those electives that need that period. And so Greg Nelson, Scott Smith is another one we're going to be pulling, and Laura General, the E R A, so we're going to try to assist them. And hopefully we'll be able to, to raise their scores. So any questions about the middle school? Okay, high school. Out of the ninth grade E O C, so as I talked about the end of course assessment that we actually have, we had nine out of eleven, we took that, passed it. And we have two eighth graders who have done it as well for one year, and we have one other one, additional one to take. Out of the class of two thousand sixteen, the tenth grade class, this year's juniors, twenty-three out of twenty-three have now passed the reading. Twenty-two out of twenty-three passed the writing. And as of August, the twenty-third student passed the writing test. So actually, all the students have passed reading and writing. And then go to, over to the math, five out of seven, and then science, eighteen out of twenty-one. And then in grade eleven on the E O C's math, we have one out of three who passed, and then in science, one out of two. I have the notes down below. The one student who did not meet the standard, I just mentioned, passed it in August. That was pretty exciting because he actually had a seventeen last spring and nailed it with a twenty-two with a twenty-four, made the highest number of points possible. So all the students in the class of two thousand fifteen and sixteen has met the standard in reading and writing. Only the students in the class of two thousand sixteen, the juniors, have not passed math, there were two of them, for the biology E O C. And one of them moved and we're taking steps, working with those students to help them to achieve that success on this test. Of the eleventh graders who did not meet the standard on the math E O C, one has since met the basic, or the basic option, which is for special needs and someone who has been identified as wanting to be able to possibly succeed on the regular assessment. And the other was, were this for short term last year, and they moved away. So even though it's reflected as a non-pass, that student is a kid. So at this point, a hundred percent of the class of two thousand fifteen has met the standard on the E O C. That's where the double asterisks are on grade eleven, those are now seniors. We have one remaining student in the class of two thousand fifteen, if you look at the science, who passed the biology E O C. This student did not take the test a sophomore year because of a tragedy occurred. And then this past spring, took it and missed it by four points. So Mr. Smith is actually working with this student now, one-on-one, and he's confident that he's going to pass in this spring. Because what he had is called a near miss, anything between three ninety and four hundred, three ninety-nine is called a near miss. Anything below that is a false. So this young man had a very good score, near miss. And so we are taking targeted steps across the board with middle school and high school, many areas of math and science. Because we want those kids to obviously meet the standard. And then we are using additional support through LAB, that living systems program, which is state assess, state money. And then G I R A, which is gaining public awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, we've been about forty thousand dollars there. And we have a pair of educators as well as teachers hired through that. And then just a heads up on a webinar today, the, they've come out and said that ninety-five percent of this year's juniors are going to be required to take the S B A. No, they don't need it, they have to take it. They're also saying that the standard that's going to be required to graduate will be pretty consistent with the standards that they have right now. But the state also said in the next breath that they are, they want us to be prepared for lower than expected scores on the smarter balance assessment for the next few years. And they're saying that we should let students, families, community members, and school board members know that that's just how it's going to be. And this is just in a cell, Washington, across the country, because no one knows if it's going to be something like that. So, any questions? So our kids, class two thousand fifteen, sixteen, are good. It's not an impact process.
So a lot too many kids are interested in math and science, or is it kids who do their senior year or is it just?
Well, what we see happening there is we do, it's the kids that are going four-year college bound that are taking the math and the science. But you do have to have four years of science for math for us. So the students that are going college bound will take the algebra two, the advanced math, the calculus, trig. But the other students will take applied math, one and two, which is more of a hands-on, and they're getting, you know, their math as well. And they can take applied math, E O C. But chemistry, physics, those are typically their four-year college bound students in this process.
So we're saying that like five out of, or seven out of twenty-three kids are probably college bound of that class?
Oh, no, no, okay, I'm sorry, here on that, that's E O C, that's how many have taken those E O Cs for, in that class and passed. It's not everybody, because you don't take the E O C until you've taken algebra, geometry, or the E O C that's, that for the class that you have completed. And you have to pass two end of course assessments. And the first one has to be algebra level. And so no, it's not that they, it's only five of seven kids have passed, it's at this point, that's all that is possible. Okay, so they're more taking math, but they haven't passed or completed the class that they need to. Because some kids, when they enter freshman year, they didn't take algebra, they didn't pre-algebra, and you can't take an E O C for algebra. It has to be algebra, so algebra, geometry, is that what you said? Any other questions?
If you have any extras, maybe you could go to.
Sure.
Probably ask some questions so.
Put that in.
So for budget, starting November, over here at seven hundred and seventy-three thousand forty-three dollars. I've added a couple more pieces of information on the budget slide. So far, mostly it's, as the months move along, just a couple things I want to bring your attention to. Of course, there's allocation according to the state formula. We don't get our funding, even we distribute it every month. It's not provided for the twelve months and then spread out, you know, enrollment changes and fluctuates. But we get, you know, nine percent of that funding in September, nine percent in October, half and half in November. You can kind of see as it slides along, it does change. Our best finance months, if you will, are July and August, which is when they take an average of the students who've had a ten percent allocation per month. So there's a couple different components there. That being one of them, and the second one being the first three or four months of the school year, September through December, we receive the amount of money we have that equates to the number of students we say that we're going to have in our budgeting process. So if it gets high, we're going to get the money. But if the kids really aren't there come January, when it's kind of our big month of reconciliation, they're going to take away more than, you know, the appropriate share. They're going to balance it out. So in the beginning, it's based on, I guess, a game, and then in January, actually through May, it's based on action. I mean, F T E, those type of levels that we actually have, and in July and August, it's your average, that you had. So just a couple of factors there, that's what I mean by these little comments on the side. So just to kind of reiterate, we ended October and are starting November at seven hundred and seventy-three thousand forty-three dollars. Questions on that part? Enrollment, we're much, we've been wanting to update on this every month. We're just at four hundred students as district wide is looking down, and I'm like, I'm recording the program. K phone's holding at two seventy-four, just for your reference, we budgeted at two sixty. So just over there for that. Questions about that part?
C D A is like, closer than.
Yeah, we actually budgeted C D A at thirty-five F T E, and now we're actually at fifty-four F T E.
So what are we actually, or is it?
Um, sixty. We have about five kindergarten, so they're going to have half funded. I don't really look at actuals all the teachers do, because they still have to go over a regular check-in and contact with those students. Forty-four is funding, but it's about sixty. Just a couple of pieces of information, I've been working commercially with Pacific in Lakai County to get the new assessed values. I met with Pacific County last week, they said they will be freezing those in or locking them in somewhere between the eighth and the nineteenth of December. I said, "The sooner the better," because we have a board meeting coming up on the sixteenth. If we can get that information, you know, we really want that information, because we want our resolution to be as, you know, as close to the actual as possible. It's approximately this or that. So they're pretty sure they'll have it locked in. As Pacific County, Lakai County, I got an email from their assessor today. He said they have a part of the equation determined at this point. If you remember from our workshop, there's two components that make up the levy base, there's real and assessed value. And then there's the half, it's called half-tap, which is half of the timber assessed about. So Bill Coons, he did say that he does have the timber part then. So if there's any correlation between Pacific County and Lakai County, Pacific County's, what we call the M and O base, went up six percent from last year. So, you know, the larger the base, the less per thousand everybody pays. So it would really be nice if we could get that money, you know, to come in, hundreds of dollars, a thousand. It looks like it's shaping up to do that, but until I get, you know, something a little further, but I'm bugging them every week, so.
Is that six point four percent county-wide, or is that for our district?
That's just for our specific one that gets to district. So I'm thinking if Lakai County even have that, a three percent, you know, if we're lucky, our levy per thousand, it'd come out at like two ninety-nine, two ninety-seven, somewhere there. So, yeah, yeah. So, but again, I'm not the assessor, that's kind of what appears, and that's kind of just an out there guess, educated guess somewhat. So because of nothing aesthetic, and I wanted to make a resolution tonight, but we can't. And so we have to have it for the third week in December, and even without that information, because we only have timelines, we have to have it through the auditor, and it's forty-five or how many days before. So that's our, kind of our drop-in date, and they need to get it in the next couple of days, and after that for months. Just to remind the board that December sixteenth, we need at least three people here, probably all everyone. Don't get sicker. Okay, just a couple little tidbits here. It was a busy week last week, we had our Veterans Day assembly, we see several veterans in the top middle picture. Had a really good turnout, it was a nice event. Top left, our elementary choir, they sang some songs. Also, our kids, girls went off to volleyball state, so you can see kind of the bottom middle slide there. We set up a human panel from all the way through the high school wing, and through the conlands and out the front door. So they're hanging out the front door there by the hockey machines. There's a good luck sign, which is in the top right-hand corner, and then the bottom two pictures are a couple clips from the state tour. Girls are back, they're at home safely, and then winter sports start again. So that's the story of their life, zip right through. It's good to get some playoffs for football, and a trip to state for volleyball, and next year we'll be really competitive again. You have, you know, a lot of, you have the kids especially that are on volleyball, they're great to see.
So we're a little bit easier.
Yeah, so with time's coming, that's it for my part, are there any questions about anything? The board items? All right, I'm going to get down to the walls, but so we should have your information in your ground folders there. Mark's, we activated, I believe, we didn't do it. Well, we activated them, but I don't guarantee it will work.
I do have one thing I'd like to.
I do have one thing I'd like to talk to the board about. Lisa sent us an email a week or two ago about the electronic message sign. And after, you know, I read it, you know, and she was looking for some feedback, my response was, this is, in my view, the entrance to our school, don't share, don't hold back on any expense, whatever it takes, you know, nice and ordered. So that's, that's one issue that I'd kind of like to talk to the board about. But along with that, and talking about the entrance to our school, something that I've been contemplating for some time is, how can you make that corner look better than that dirt bank that's right below the sign? And I've got some ideas, there's some architectural walls that can be put in there, but the problem is, that is DOT rightfully. And what, what I'd like to do with the board, and Lisa's permission, is to contact DOT and just see what the possibilities would be of maybe doing something within their right-of-way. They, you're essentially going to have to sign your life away. There's going to be permits, you know, if they were to allow, and it might, it might just be a showstopper, then they may not allow anything. And at that point, then there's not a lot to do with it. But in the event that there would be a way of them permitting the concept, what, what I'd like to do is then bring it back to you, and if there's enough support from the board, then ask them to go to Facilities Committee for consideration and recommendation. So, you know, we're not talking about lots of money here. A lot of it, I could do base engineering myself, I could install the wall myself. But that's neither here nor there, the big issue at this point would be finding out DOT would even allow work to occur within their right-of-way.
So what's different, the signs on DOT, very, very different?
No, it's not.
So how would the wall be if the signs on?
Well, the wall is that corner, that radius, right from the ditch, going up, and that dirt bank that won't grow any grass, it's too steep to bone, you know, basically, it's got to be rounded up to keep the brush down, and just, you know, I, I think our entryway deserves better, and those alum block walls are just, they're classic, they're, they look nice, and that would be up to whoever's ideas, how to finalize that, Facility Committee, whoever, you know. But, you know, I just think it would improve that corner, it would allow the possibility for maybe some landscaping between the sign and the wall, you know, where maybe in the spring, we could have blue and gold flowers, or whatever, even some bark dust, or just something to make it look like, you know, we still have got it together. And so, anyway, that's just, it's something I've been thinking about for actually a number of years, and would like to pursue it if the board would allow me to use it. Do we have any kind of a projected cost on repairing the sign? Is that what it needs, is digital sign out, is that what we're talking about?
We've got some bins, it has a couple issues, and, yeah, they, it's about one year old. So we tried updating software, we had it going on now, it has connectivity issues, gives for medical reasons.
Is the, are the problems within the sign itself, or are there connections to it, to the problem? Is the connection up here to the school the problem, or is it kind of all of the?
It's a little bit of everything. We had it going, and it gives out, now timed out, we've updated the software, we just aren't always sure, there's some issues with the panel at times. Randy could probably explain a lot better, he's given on that thing a bunch, like, I would just, you know, we've still been there a couple upgrades, and, you know, some of the technologies changed so much with, you know, we have like bouncing balls, it's basketball season.
Well, one thing that I do notice going by Lakaijin's sign, is that there is no way you can read anything there, okay? Because it's too slow. You know, you almost have to turn around if you want to actually, I won't read it, but if you want to read, you almost have to turn around three times to try and read. So whether, I don't know what their story is there, but they've got all kinds of stuff up there, but you can never read, only about two different messages, maybe when you apply it. But maybe that's just too much information, you know, on a reader's side like that, I guess. But I've always kind of looked at it like, I don't know, the speed limit is only fifty. Seriously? Seventy's too much, really?
We are, we've, you know, got a couple bins on it to see what it costs, but what we're looking at is just replacing the enters, basically.
Eaters?
Yes, the panel. Maybe you ought to go out and get a home sign there, probably piece of money down. Talk to the back trauma, it's, you know, if it went in, and there was another person that Randy was talking to, supposed to be, um, this weekend. So we're just kind of fishing around at this point. That's something I've thought about for quite a while, nice to have a defined entryway. There is a report there, you know, ESP comes out, we're never sure really how to get here, build, we have a little bit of a sign out here, we have that out there, which sometimes Just something to add to that. Well, can we, we can get some air with all of this?
Yes, I think that.
Fishing at this point.
You know, since they did the remodel, and the debris way went away years ago, and, you know, sort of used the back entrance, it never really became the front entrance, it always has been kind of the back entrance, you know, sort of used now as the only entrance, other than bus doors, so. I like that idea of some sort of an entrance, I really like that. And so you're talking about some sort of cement decorative blocks or something?
Yeah, it's, the generic term is alum block, they're an architectural block. They've got a one-inch step back with each block. And, you know, it's an engineered wall, it would probably require a landscape architect's signature on the drawing, because when you get above, I think, five layers, you've got to start putting in geosynthetic fabric for enforcement, reinforcement. And so there might be some expense there, but my, my primary purpose right now is simply to find out if we can even do it. And, you know, if the board doesn't want to go down that path now or in the future, I mean, that's fine, but it'd be nice to find out, and see what maybe some options could be.
Yeah, personally, I'd like to see some, you know, some ideas of, you know, I've thought about the same thing, how can we make this more appealing and maybe sort of inviting as, as far as people coming to the school that have never been here, it's like, you know, how do they, you know, not sure where to go here. I don't think I have a creative mind for that, you know, my father's, since he set us in a block out there.
So can fly and leave, you provide the connection to DOT?
Well, I think, I think all those people have moved on, you know, there are going to be new contacts, but, you know, my first thing, we go top tour, he'll have the right-of-way plans, which will show exactly where the lines are at. And that's going to be the first thing. And then, then I need a contact, I think it's the utilities group that would be processing and prevent different work within the right-of-way, but that.
First things first, I guess, right? If I have any, if you guys are okay with that. Yeah, I'm really good with that, I think I'd screw it, okay? Okay, so anything else from the board? Okay. I have a motion to adjourn, please.
Although we adjourn? I'll say it.
Second, all those that say aye.
Aye.
She's called, and she carries, we adjourn.